July 6, 2021, Jackson City Council Meeting to Order. And we have Councilmember Wallace leave us in our invocation and pledge. If you will, please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the people gathered here today and gathered here in person. Lord, I ask you to help us look towards you each time we're thinking about a decision, thinking about what we need to do. I ask you to let our eyes and our mind focus on you to do the best thing to our ability for Jackson and for the citizens of our community. Dear Lord, help us each day to live by the golden rule and help us to always remember to take care of those that can't take care of themselves. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity of justice for all.
Item three is roll call. And Sandy, I'm so excited to be able to say that all council members are present today. Welcome back, Councilmembers. Item four is approval of the minutes for the June 8, 2021, special called, special called City Council meeting. Those minutes were emailed out, I believe, so there's no additions or corrections. They'll stand approved as read. We do have one proclamation, we have one recognition, if you'll indulge me, council wasn't on the agenda, but I'd like to call Mr. Ron Jewell, if he would, to the podium. He has a special recognition for Diane Robinson.
Good morning, Mayor Conger and members of the council.
Good morning.
My name is Ron Jewell. I come to you as Vice President of the Orpheum's Halloran Center in downtown Memphis and also as a former president of an organization that's called Tennessee Presenters Network. And I apologize, I'm just getting over a little bit of bronchial issues, so I'm going to talk a little slower than I might normally. I come today to help you and ask you to help me honor a good friend of mine and colleague, Diane Robinson, in her last week of work in retirement for the city of Jackson. And I come because I know like Diane, I share the understanding and the feeling that the cultural arts in the community has a way of developing creative young people, creative business solutions, and by and large will make the city of Jackson a much more livable city. I know that you all hold those kind of things in your heart, and I hope you understand that cultural arts in a city like Jackson can be the economic driver that a business community will help foster. I've known Diane for now 20-plus years probably, being as close as I am to Jackson and Memphis with the Tennessee Presenters. We share a lot of information back and forth. We've been colleagues now for these number of years that she's been in this position. I, before joining the Orpheum staff six years ago, was 21 years with the city of Bartlett Performing Arts Center. So I have a very close understanding of what role municipality can play in the development of cultural arts. And I have spent my share two times a month sitting in a similar meeting just like this for those 21 years. I'm not going to go on and on, but I did feel that I wanted to make the drive up from Memphis this morning to honor my colleague, but more importantly, my friend Diane. And I hope that in these last days, that she is on your staff, that you'll take a moment to let her know how proud you are of the work that she and the NED have put forth over these last years. I remember when a NED was built, they actually came down to my Bartlett facility and we shared ideas about the actual physical structure. So I've known the NED, been very close to the NED, and there will be some people who can tell you that I actually played the NED myself on a couple of occasions. That's really all I have to say to you today, but I challenge you to help me honor Diane in these last days, and please let her know that all the work that she's done for the city has not gone unnoticed and that Jackson is a better place for having had Diane in that position. God bless the city of Jackson and God bless America. Thank you.
And Ron, we surely do echo what you say and appreciate all the work Diane has done and appreciate her dedication to the NED and to the city of Jackson. All right, item six is invitation for public comment. Any item under first reading, we have a public hearing. If so, on that item, you recognize you want to speak in favor of or opposition to, and you'll be allowed to speak at that moment. First reading, item one, proposed budget ordinance to transfer $4 million from the general fund to capital outlay fund for street repaving.
As the mayor described, this is an actual amendment to our FY22 budget ordinance, which is previously approved by the council. It comes to you in the form of amendment to the ordinance because this would in fact transfer money from the general fund to the, to the capital outlay fund. It's for $4 million, and the purpose of the amendment would to add additional funds to our proposed street repaving program for FY22.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do we have the streets out?
We don't have a final list of the streets. We have a preliminary list that Engineering Department is still working on with JEA and stormwater to ensure that we can provide the best streets and do the best work for this year.
Is Mr. Wolf available?
Yep.
Bobby, if you could, if you could stay too. One of the questions, so we have $4 million, which we were granted by the state, three-quarters of a million this year to go into a street resurfacing plan. Is that correct? So would the total be the 4.75 is what we're going to allocate towards street resurfacing this year?
Well, I think the total, and I'm going to have to round these numbers just, just a little bit. There's $1.3 million carryover funds that come from the $1.5 million grant that we received in FY21. Then the award from the state this year was $750,000. However, we're going to use 90.
Yeah, right around.
Yeah, right around $100,000, 90 to 100,000 for a street signalization project.
Okay.
So what's in the capital budget right now is about 1.9 plus million dollars for street repaving, and this additional 4 million would be on top of that. So we would get close to $6 million.
Okay. So, you know, as we look back, I believe we allocated 3.7 million. Was that FY20? And we spent about 2 million of that? And then last year, we had 1 point, 1.5, we spent $200,000. So, you know, and this is what I said at the pre-agenda meeting, when we make these amendments and the budget is a contract with the, with the public, we're saying we're going to do what we said we're going to do. And when we get, when we get to the point where we're just saying that we're going to do things, we're not actually achieving those goals, that's a, that's a different conversation. That's my fear with this. I've stated that to you, Mr. Wolf, on just the timing of this, and as we're sitting here kind of crunched, you know, typically I would think this would happen in February. February, March, we'd be finalizing the streets, putting out to bid, so when the plants open in April, we can take advantage of the warm months. But here we are, late, late summer, trying to figure this out. There's no doubt there's a need for street resurfacing in the community. My questions continue to revolve around, is this going to have the most impact for the dollars that we spend? And when I look at the list that was provided to us, that, that question continues to bubble up to the top of my questions. And also, what's the total amount that we're putting into this? When I go through and I look at your numbers, it looks, are all these proposed to be overlaid? Or are we going to mill up some of these?
It'll be a combination of milling, depending, I think most of it's going to be milled. There may be a need to undercut in areas that we have bad base.
Okay.
The stormwater stuff will be done in-house by our guys, so that is not part of that contract.
So when we go to, because I know Ms. Wallace had some questions on, on Thursday about the process and vetting out and making sure that, one, whenever we pave a restreet, we've coordinated with JEA so that we don't have a ridge crest incident where we pave, you know, a mile of street and then ridge crest gets cut up by JEA a couple of months later. Two, if we have stormwater repairs that need to happen, we're looking at those under these streets and confirming that those are going to happen in the same year before we repave a street and have to go through and cut it again.
Correct.
Okay. For me, it's just about being genuine with the public on what we're, what we're intending to do here. We can say we're going to spend $6 million, and if we spend a million, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, right? I mean, we're just telling the public we're spending 6 million. So I would like, if, and I'll amend, I'll amend any motion, but I would like to make sure that we have you coming back on a monthly basis to give us an update on where we are in the project.
I can do that.
If we decide to continue forward with this.
Okay, I can do that. And just to, just to respond to your, in, in your request or your information regarding JEA and stormwater, we've been working, when we first established a list of 1.5 million, we had JEA involved already back then, and that was probably in April, March, April, and we continue to keep them in line with this to make sure that we, the last thing I want to do as city engineer is go out there and pave a street, and then JEA come back the next week and say, oh yeah, by the way, we need to dig up the middle of the road and put a storm sewer, or a sand derrick sewer in. You don't, you, you tend not to be in a good position to do that. So we've, I've, I've done a number of these projects with other communities I've worked with or for, and we've always gotten all of the underground infrastructure people involved to make sure that we are not cutting this road open as soon as we pave it.
I appreciate that. You know, as I stated on Thursday, to me, this, we have to be genuine with the public. And two, you know, we asked for some information on Thursday. We were told it was going to be there by Friday. It wasn't. We got it over the weekend.
Correct.
But, you know, we need to work on that communication to make sure, I, I had, I had to really work hard and ask Ms. Sandy to send a lot of emails to get this list off the get-go. We need to be working with the, with the council here. We know these streets. We know what, what issues we have in our communities. We get told it on a daily basis. And so if there's, I would hope that the mayor's office could reach out to individual councilmen and work out which areas need the most improvement and make sure that we're paving the most, the streets with, the streets with the most need. I see on this list that, that we sent out, that got sent out over the weekend, that there's a lot, there are, there's some that are fours and fives in there.
Three fours and fives, correct.
Right. And, and, and that, that represents about 25% of the paving package per square foot.
Okay, per square foot, yeah.
That's right.
I think there's 18 of them that are in that.
Right. But on a per-square-foot basis, that's about 25%.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that the dollars that we're allocating are going to make the most impact in the community.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's also my concern, because Tom, you and I have talked about a couple of streets, Taft and Washington Streets, that's in that area, that's, it's going to have some, has some flooding issues from time to time. And that road is just torn all to pieces. Now fortunately, the Street Department's gone out and taken a look at that and has patched a lot of that. But I don't know if the stormwater issue is impacting that, and if that's the case, I expect to see those streets on a list at some point in the future.
Correct.
It's got to be done.
Correct, no.
Because, and, and the reason I say that, because a lot of people from the south part of the city, and also from Chester County, Hardin County, down that way, when they come to work, they cut through Riverside Drive and go through around there. So there's a lot more traffic than people may actually. So I'm, I'm looking to see those streets on a list pretty soon.
What held them up from being put on this specific one is we need to do a very detailed stormwater analysis. Because it floods all the time, the road has no pitch on it. Jason and I have talked about it, and we know what we have to do, but it can't be done in order to, that's for those two streets to hit the paving program now.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wolf. Okay, thank you. Mr. Wolf, thank you for being here. And I consider you our expert. And I know that we all each have roads in our district, but I do feel like that we need to have the person that has expertise to look at the roads and consider this. But just a little education, what would you consider the main two reasons we have decay of our roads? What two issues?
The two issues that come to mind when I take a look at the condition of the streets is, A, the quality of the materials and, and the road itself, and the contractor itself. In my business, that I've done for 40-some years now, generally, when I was up north, when I was in Wisconsin working, we never had a contractor working without an inspector, never. When I moved down to the south and started working here, then it became more of a periodic just because of the cost of what it would be, what it would be to hire an inspector and keep them on the job site. My last job, I had four inspectors handling 40 to 50 projects, so they each had anywhere from 10 to 12 of them. We did have inspection, but it was not continuous inspection. So I think lack of inspection is one of the reasons. The other one is the climat, the materials, because you have an awful lot of corrugated metal pipe in this city. That is a major problem. Corrugated metal pipe has a very short lifespan versus plastic or concrete. And the rest of it is, a lot of it's weather related, too. We had, just as a ridge crest, I believe it was, ridge crest took a beating when they got it down to one lane, and we had every trucker in the state, I was hoping the state, we had an issue because the truckers all came off on their own, and then they just followed one another and took the easiest point to get somewhere. Once those 18-wheelers hit ridge crest, that's when all the damage occurred. And we did spend about $252,000 one time through, and there are now adjacent areas that we're going to be going through now for another $67,000 to fill in the gaps. We're not going to have to go as extensively into the subgrade, but we're going to have to be milling full depth and coming back with a full depth of asphalt.
Okay.
But I would say inspection, and the other one would be weather.
Okay. So as we're looking at going forward, do you feel like that you will be able to inspect the roads now, look underneath them? And I'll just say my concern, and I voiced this Thursday night and several times throughout since I've been on the council, is the stormwater issue and the years of the pipes under our roads. To me, it's very concerning when I see sinkholes in people's yards because our pipes do run between two houses, but there's nothing that we can do about it. So I am all for allocating the money. We desperately need it. But I would really love to see a plan, a comprehensive plan of how we're going to work together, including JEA, including in the future, we can't go backwards, but in the future, inspection, and then how we're addressing our stormwater, because as Councilman Pickens was saying, I have an area that's a little area that needs to be resurfaced, but it's because it floods. I've even flooded out there where the car, you know, won't work. So I guess I'm just asking for real, open, and a plan that, how we are going to address this, and if we do have a mechanism that can go in the pipes now and say how old it is, let's please address those issues before we spend this money to make sure that we're going to get the lifetime out of the roads, which we should be able to.
Our intent is to look at every one of these streets as far as stormwater goes, including piping. Stormwater operations already advised me, there's a couple of streets that need cross culverts in them to make sure they drain. The analysis of the, of the storm sewer system is a whole different huge animal, because I don't think we have a whole lot of records as far as the city goes with what was done, what wasn't done. If there was, I don't know where they are, and I've had people try to find them, and we haven't been able to find them. But as I stated once before, and I think it was with you in the parking, parking structure, that any study we do, my first goal, once the study is completed, is to get rid of every corrugated metal pipe that's underneath the roadway. That's where our big problems are. Then start looking at getting rid of corrugated metal pipe altogether. The last community I worked for, we did not allow corrugated metal, none. We used plastic and we used reinforced concrete. And we do have, Alan will be doing, be involved in the inspection of the project. He will be involved in working with the contractor to determine what extent of undercutting has to be done. We also have an inspector right now that is working with the stormwater operations people. The goal there is to transfer him into and get him involved. But my, when we brought him on board, it was to use, to use him for paving, but he's also helping out with storms so that Jason can spend more time getting work done than looking at it. And so far, I believe that's been working out pretty well. I haven't had any negative comments.
Okay, I, I would just like to ask that we work together.
Sure.
But instead of just passing this today, as Councilman Taylor mentioned earlier, I would like to hear back how we're progressing with that plan.
Sure.
I know we can't do it all right now, but we can get the people together and start working towards a goal that's going to be the best for our infrastructure.
Correct.
So that's what I would like to see, and thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. You had talked about inspectors that we was going to hire. Are they qualified or people that know what they're doing? That's been the biggest issue we had. We didn't have anybody that was out on the job inspecting these.
There's always a training process of bringing someone in to do inspection. Alan has spent a lot of time on this paving program. I believe he worked with it last year. And I've got a lot of experience in paving as well. We don't do a lot of, we won't be inspecting the sewer and water because that's all done by JEA through their inspectors. My priority right now with the paving is to make sure it's going down properly, we're getting the right depth, we're getting it rolled properly, and it's supposed to be per specifications. I know we've had issues, and it came up at one of the meetings about roads deteriorating within six months of being overlaid. What we, there, there is a one-year warranty typically in the contracts. What has to happen there is all those streets, if we do all these streets, they will need to be inspected at 10, 11 months out, so that if there is any, we call it punch list in our business. If there are any punch list items that have to be addressed, they have to be addressed before we release that bond or we accept the project as complete. That's just the way I've always operated.
That's, that's a problem.
I can't tell you what was done here before, but I can tell you that, that is the practice I've generally had. You need to do a war, I call it a warranty inspection.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of quick questions. Mr. Arnold, in the event that we allocate this 4 million to the capital outlay for the paving project, and we're unable to complete these projects in this fiscal year, would that money then roll over, or I'm sorry, remain in the capital outlay and then be eligible for use the next year? Is that correct?
It would roll over if it's encumbered or committed by, by contract or PO. You know, just to be in the budget and to be non-committed would not qualify it to roll over. But if it is encumbered in some way by contract or PO, it would roll over. No, that would be our funds. The state funds are, are different. I, I can't remember the date exactly, but the 1.5 million that we received in FY21 and the 750,000 this year, they have provisions that allow us to commit, complete the work sometime after the fiscal year.
Mr. Wolf, realistically, what do you think, because I mean, obviously, a lot going on with the list, the stormwater, et cetera, what do you feel is a realistic timeline from when we could straighten these things out and actually see some fresh blacktop?
I would, my goal was to hit the August meeting, finalize the specifications with the meeting we had Thursday. I wasn't quite sure where we were with, with the process. We, my intent was to get them out shortly and be putting blacktop down sometime late August, early September. And I've already talked to, communicated with one of the main contractors, and he has indicated to me in writing that there should not be an issue completing the project by June 30. My biggest concern is they can pave during the winter, and if the state's got a project going, a batch plant will stay open for the state. My concern with that, working over the winter, is there are certain, there's a timeframe that the work cannot be done to put surface material down. That's part of the TDOT specifications that we reference in our specifications. They can pave, but there's a special process. It's a, it's a report that they have to submit on a daily basis that'll tell us how many rollers will be there, what the temperature is, et cetera, et cetera. And then I take a look at that and say, yes, you can, or no, you can't. My biggest concern there of using that methodology during the colder months is I don't want to mill a street and then find out we're going to get three weeks of weather where they can't pave, and I've got traffic on a binder that isn't built to take the structural integrity of the vehicles, and it's going to be a mess. So it, if, they might be able to do projects like, streets like that that may be a block long, two blocks long, but there's no way I'm going to authorize anybody to go out and pave, and mill a half a mile of road, not knowing, we know we can get it paved back down. Now, the 4 million, I believe, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, is when, my intent was to use half of that 4 million for this program now and put the other 2 million in, in the pocket just in case we have, have something happen during the winter that we need to appropriate the money for. But I also, once December hits and we get this project moving, December hits, Alan and I, and I've mentioned it to the mayor, I want to start putting together another project that we can bid out in February and March, which is the time it should be bid out, so that we can move forward with the project of, of the balance of the $2 million, and again, attack the ones in the twos that are on the list to be completed.
Mr. Wolf.
I'm sorry, but just point of clarity, Councilman McKelvey, to your, to your question, should, should this be approved and this amendment posted to transfer this fund from the general fund to the, to the capital outlay fund for 4 million dollars, but the contract only be for two, four this year? Without getting too technical, what, what, what this amendment would, would accomplish is, if that's the case, we would have $2 million remaining in our capital outlay fund balance above what we had budgeted or planned for. So that would enable the council to take action. If in fact, it's not encumbered or contracted, there would be $2 million in the fund balance that would be available to the council at some point to commit in the next budget year or the new budget year. Does that, that make sense to me? So one way or the other, either between the provisions in the state grant or the carryover provisions, if, if budgeted funds are in fact are encumbered, or the fact that budgeted funds are not encumbered and therefore our, our fund balance is larger at the end of the year, so one way or the other, there would be funds available at some point in the future if these are approved. Is that clear?
But only for the roads.
That's right.
I too share some of the concerns of making sure when we communicate this to the public that we are hitting the roads that need to be hit and not just doing it for sake of doing it. It's been discussed that this is a preliminary list of roads. If this were to be approved to start moving forward today, what's the plan between first reading and second reading to involve us, to make sure we are hitting the, the roads that need to be hit and coming up with that kind of holistic plan that, that as we are going forward and approving these funds, we can, you know, confidently say to our constituents, hey, these are the most important roads?
If there are going to be any changes in the project, I would be hesitant to get that thing bid out now because I'd want a complete document and a final document to go forward to the contractors, because he's going to base his contract on that. You do have some leeway in a contract that you have. I want to say it's like a 10%, if you under or over 10%, you're okay, but after that, it becomes an issue with what the contractor bid. At least that's my understanding. It may be a little different either here, but I've, I've had that before. Generally, the contracts I've had, we haven't gone 10% over, but I, we would need a complete final list in order to incorporate the necessary mapping into the documents, make sure the quantities are right. I want to get a price on as many quantities as we can, even if they're going to be minimal, just to establish a price in the contract. The last thing I want to do halfway through is start negotiating change orders, because change orders never come out to the benefit of the city. They always come out to the benefit of the contractor.
So what point do we bid that out in this process?
Well, if we, if you guys, if, if council wants to take a look at this, we'll end up having to push it into September. We can shorten, we can lessen the number of streets done. It will still come out in September, but we will, will have fewer work and then just make more, and then create more projects for the, for the spring. We can do it that way, too.
Ms. White, how long does a bid process for this item take? Two weeks? Okay.
Advertise, I believe, 14 days and seven days prior to bid opening is what I believe the advertising is.
I mean, I think we all agree that it is needed, and we I think we all agree that it is needed and we want to do it quickly. I just want to make sure we're not doing it quickly while not hitting, you know, what we'll really need to focus on.
I guess as a, as a city engineer and responsible for this project, what I would ask then the council members to take a look at this list. If you have any suggestions, I'm open to suggestions to take it back into the, you know, we'll take a look at it in the field because we have looked at every one of these streets, if not once, twice. The report that was prepared, the P A S A report, is just that, a report. It's a recommendation. What, what, that report is a very subjective process. I believe, typically, I believe it's done by a team or one person, two people, so that you don't have different standards looking at the streets as you go through. As I often say, I can give this list to nine aldermen and get nine different projects just because of your interpretation and subjectivity of what you want done. So I would entertain any suggestions to take a look at. Obviously, I'll have to take a look at from the professional, professional engineer end of it. And if it's warranted, yes. If not, I will voice my opinion and we, and we go from there. I don't have an issue with that.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wolf, I really want to say again, I don't think that we should be the experts. I think that we should say, here's the street, we, it's getting lots of traffic. A thousand people in three days drive on this. So I, I really, my concern is, I hope that you're stretched enough that you can do all this. And if we do have some, because there is one street that is not wide enough to be considered a street, so I don't think we should be paving it until we address some other issues. So you're saying that we need to get with you right away. I'm not asking for more. I just want to make sure that what's on that list, if that's truly the list now that we're going to use from. I thought we might be making some adjustments.
Looks like we need to get this resolved this week in order for him to keep with his timeline.
If, I know when we had the budget meeting in this room, I had asked the question that if we miss a, the meeting first, first Tuesday of the month, would the council be willing and the mayor be willing to call a special call meeting strictly to move forward with that project? It may only be a five-minute meeting, but that would give us some time, too, to, to get it taken care of. But I, what I need is, if, if you want, if you need to, if you want to give me input on specific streets, we'll make the final decision as an engineering department.
Sure, that's what it should be.
And not the council.
Sure.
And I, I, don't take that wrong.
No, that's the way, that's the way it should be.
No, it should be.
Correct, and that's, and I'm, I'd be more than willing to look at any streets that you guys may have questions on, in, in horse trade, this and that, because whatever we don't do now is going to be the priority in the fault, in the, in the bid set up for next spring.
Yeah.
So if we don't do it now, my effort is going to be to try to get it done in the spring.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve a, a transfer not to exceed $4 million contingent upon Mr. Wolf coming back with a finalized list. And, and I would also make the second reading contingent upon the final price in, in the, in the doc, in the contract.
Second, but Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can you do the second reading contingent?
I don't think so.
No, you, you can't do the second reading contingent.
You, you can't do the second reading contingent. You, we can adjust the price of the second reading based upon the, the contract amount. We do that quite often.
You're talking about the price of the transfer, the cost of the transfer is what you want to?
The cost of the contract.
But you want to adjust, you want to adjust the cost of the transfer based on the cost of the contract?
Not to exceed $4 million. And then if he comes back and it's, and if it's 3.25, then we approve 3.25. So he's still got his bonus 1.9 that, that you're sitting on from previously unfinished business.
I don't think you can. You can do the first reading. You can't do the second.
Would require another reading.
Right. We change, we change our budget amendment regularly like that. We approve a number and then there are mo, there are minor modifications and we approve another number. Yeah. Not a contingency.
Well, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on to the second on the motion.
So where, where's the, where's the fault in my motion?
The second on, based on the second reading?
All right, Teresa.
Yeah, I think as, if I phrase it as not to exceed $4 million, then we've had many instances where we've used that language. We've come in at 3.7, 3.5, and we've, we've approved it on second reading. So do I need to rephrase my motion? I think so. Just rephrase your more.
Yeah, before he does that, Mr. Wolf, didn't you say that you wanted to use the $2 million? You've looked at the list and thought it was around $2 million.
We're at three point, I believe that list is right around 3.8, 3.9 right now.
For the list that we have currently?
Correct.
Okay, so would that be considered?
Oh, I, I think I understand.
Yeah, I was going back to the $2 million, and that would be a large.
That would be a major modification.
Withdraw the original motion.
Withdraw the original motion, reframe the, restate the motion as a motion to approve a budget ordinance transfer of not to exceed $4 million from the general fund to the capital outlay fund for street paving.
Second.
All right, motion is second. This is an item on first reading. So open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be recognized at this moment?
I'm sorry to, I would like to amend my motion. I'd, I'd amend that.
Let me close the public hearing first.
Right, go ahead.
You may turn the mic off.
Yeah, somebody, yeah.
But it's been seconded.
Yeah, it's been seconded.
It's been seconded. You can amend it.
All right.
It's been seconded.
Okay, public hearing's closed.
I'd like to amend that motion to have Mr. Wolf present us monthly reports on the status of this project.
Second.
Now we have to vote on the amendment.
That's right.
Before we vote on the full motion. Okay.
That's right.
All right, so this is a vote on the amendment to the original motion. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed 9-0.
Okay, so now the original, now the amended motion is not to exceed $4 million with monthly reports.
With monthly reports.
Progress reports.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed 9-0.
All right.
Thank you. Y'all give me a headache this morning.
Item two is proposed budget amendment to capital outlay fund of $1,450,000 for homeless shelters.
So just very quickly, this, this is a, this is a budget amendment to the capital outlay fund. And what this amendment would accomplish, and Lauren and others are going to provide you the detail here, would be the appropriation of $1,450,000 for the acquisition and renovation of a homeless shelter for men. And it would also recognize the revenue or the funding for that appropriation to come from C D B G and other grants, they're here to talk about as well.
All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. I thought it'd be helpful to provide you some background on this project and where we're at in the process to hopefully anticipate any questions you have. But then, of course, we'd welcome your questions when I finish. As you all may remember, the last winter, we had a tragic death of someone who was unsheltered in our community. I know that's not the first that our community has seen, but it was certainly the first that our administration has seen. And we had the opportunity, working with Mayor Conger, to use the civic center because it was not being used for events due to COVID for a warming shelter. And contingent upon that use, the mayor had emphasized that we needed to work together as a community to move forward to establish a permanent shelter for men, which is not something that we have. We have programs that serve men, but not nearly to the capacity that we have the need in our community. So there's been a group of different nonprofit providers, including the Housing Authority, United Way, others that have worked together over the past four months to identify a location that would be suitable, identify funding sources to make this project work. We did have a different property identified initially, but with costs and, and other various things that didn't work out. So we are coming to you today with this budget amendment so that we can move forward on the project because we need a budget line item to even begin the process of getting the building appraised. So I'm not guaranteeing that this is the final shelter location. It's just probably the best location that we have in terms of space, of where it's at and cost. So I included in your packet, and you may have seen it, Sandy may have included it, but it's just an overview of the project. It's important to note that these funds are for acquisition and renovation. It's not for operating. So we are not going to be funding the operations. That's on the operator to do. Like I mentioned, the property's been identified, and we'll do our due diligence to make sure that it's a fair price. But it is 7,800 square feet, and it also includes an adjacent lot, which we would acquire as one parcel that would allow us to hold approximately 25 to 30 men, which is also important to note with these funds. It has to be individual rooms. Can't be congregate sheltering because of COVID. We feel like that's a good amount based on the number that was using the emergency shelter and based on the numbers that we see. We have had planning. Building Department and Mr. Hal Crocker walked through this building already, and they have all said everything seems to check out. Again, we'll do a full inspection. But from a preliminary point of view, it looks good. Hal has given us an estimate on renovations to the tune of about $900,000. So we're still kind of in the budget of 1.4 that we have for this project. Again, I know that seems high, but it is for individual, non-congregate sheltering. The timeline I have on here, that's just an ideal. I mean, of course, we would all love to have a shelter open before winter, but with construction, the way that things are right now, it's probably just going to move slow. Alongside this process, we are doing a R F P for the operator. And so we will come back to you guys in September with a contract for the operator. But just kind of think about that as like parallel processes because we want the operator involved in the design. Obviously, the city's not in the business of running a shelter, so we need the operator to know, you know, where certain things need to be placed. There is a review committee that will be working on that. And we will ensure that there are provisions in that contract to make sure that the operator is performing, that we don't have a homeless shelter that is just turned into permanent housing. But that we're actually seeing results, seeing these guys transition into the next thing. And so the operator will be awarded a one-year renewable lease contingent upon that performance, and you guys will receive reports on that and how that's going. It is important to note that with these funds, this must serve as a shelter for at least five years. And then after that five-year point, it can be transitioned to permanent affordable housing for homeless, low-income homeless, if needed. Our hope is that would continue as a shelter, of course, but that is with the HUD funding. Of course, the question is why now? Obviously, this is a large pot of funds that we have available through these grants that we're really fortunate that we got through the stimulus package. So I don't know when we would have this amount of funding in the future to be able to be reimbursed. Also, the community has collected a lot of items already for the shelter that are in storage, and so we see a lot of community support pushing this project forward. Another question is, why do the whole 1.4 million now versus doing it in phases? Part of that honestly is efficiency. We're coming to you guys with a budget amendment. Every part of the phase, that's going to take a lot longer to get the shelter open, which you may be fine with. However, we do know that we have a pressing need to get this done. Also, I believe it is HUD's preference, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that they want to see the full project presented upfront as a full amount. Sorry.
Excuse me, is that a contingency upon their participation?
Upon us receiving the HUD funding, yes.
Okay, so, so it's either all or nothing?
Yes, but we've already been awarded both the C D B G CARES Act final round funds.
You got the money.
Well, we don't have it yet, but we've been awarded. So we have to go through the amendment process, which is on the agenda, to send that to HUD, and they release the funds after we do our due diligence as far as the.
Excuse me. So the council just has to bless off on it for you to get your funding?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I approve the amended budget for the capital outlay for a homeless shelter.
Second. The, the motion is second, okay. This is a, let me go, let me go public hearing first and then we'll go back to discussion. This is an item on first reading. Open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, can raise your hand and be recognized at this point. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And any further discussion?
Yeah, excuse me. The other, other dates associated with these two grants that we need to be aware of on, on drawing down the dollars?
Yeah, now, again, the amendment for the $455,000, you'll, it's on the agenda for today. The home American Rescue Plan funds is about $1 million, but we don't plan to start that amendment process until about October or November after HUD releases their official guidance. They've already sent us notice that we've been awarded the funds, but we have to wait on them to put out their guidance on the funds. Because the home funds under the A R P are different. They're specifically for homeless activities. The regular home funds are for affordable housing only, so they have to do new guidance on the funds.
My question was around, do you have to spend the dollars by a certain date on, for each of these?
We have, on the C D B G, we have six years, and on the home funds, we have until 2030.
Okay, so we, we have some time to spend? Okay. My concern is, based off of, of our experience coming on two years ago, with Al, with going ahead and setting a budget, a kind of a blind budget out there to build to, it just creates a lot of problems. What, what I'd like to see us do is, is consider allocating $250,000 to get the building under contract and to go through a design, a design stage with, you say you have, you need to talk to, to the operators to kind of get an idea of what this thing's actually going to look like. So we really don't know what it's going to look like yet on the number of bathrooms and so forth. So if we can come up with a plan and get that plan priced and have a contractor like Mr. Crocker or somebody else walk us through that process to figure out exactly what the cost is. So then we can come back and say, here's what the, the actual cost is, not, here's 1.5 million, we think we can do it. I've seen, in my experience, I've seen us say that we're going to build something for a certain amount. We, then we end up either trimming things back to make it fit within the box, or we end up coming back asking for more money. This thing, this is a great need in our community. There's no doubt about it. We just need to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I have to say, I think that we're, we're aware of the budget and all of our planning and costs are going to be centered around that, even leaving a cushion for any unknowns.
So what, what?
If the project, if we, if we can't do it within what we have, then it's not going to go forward. We'll look at allocating those funds to something else, even though.
And then you come back and, and bring your amended plan back to reallocate those dollars?
Yes, we would have to do that. Yes.
Okay.
We would have to come back to you all.
Mr. Chairman, something I'd like to go back to that Ms. Kirk said was that in the community support, one of the groups from this last leadership Jackson class gathered, I want to say 50, maybe not 40, 50 rooms worth of supplies that includes bed frames, mattresses.
Pots, yeah.
Mini fridges, basically everything that an individual room would need to be fully operational. So if there's any concerns as far as outfitting the interior, it is already there in place. Kenny was a part of that class. He can speak to it. But yeah, they really, they need the shell, the finished interior, and then everything is ready to be placed for these individuals to have a comfortable space.
All right, question on, just kind of timeline, because I agree, it's something we need, but as well, just making sure we do this correctly. Of when we, we prove this, we look at the building, then we move on to the operator figuring that out. At what point in time do we own the building after the operator has been figured out? Because I guess what I'm getting at is like.
They may not even be able to buy the building. That's what they don't.
We would have to get it appraised first, which standard is involved in that process.
I guess my concern is that we, if we bought the building like too far in advance and then.
Yeah, no, and that's why I'm trying to time them.
We're scheduling, okay, we're thinking through it.
I'm trying to parallel time it.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Kirk, I would just like to say thank you so much because this is so needed, and I feel like I know your heart and your passion and really appreciate that so much and what you're doing. And I do have just one little tiny question. On the operator, it sounds like that's kind of an unknown. Do they look at that, or would someone look at that yearly to make sure they have the funds allocated and that they're able to complete what they're supposed to do? And how often is that contract maybe, or is it a contract looked at for the operator?
Well, the program is monitored by C D B G to make sure it stays in compliance. And I want to say on the front end of the program of this project, what we're going to be doing is the due diligence. An architect will be involved to make sure, number one, the cost and the design of the building. That's why we're looking at this building. It's not permanent that we're going to, it's not solid that we're going to buy that building. But the, all the C D B G. to, it's not solid that we're gonna buy that building, but all the CDBG funds are monitored, just like the other program by Latonya through the CDBG program, and it's some benchmarks that we have to meet and continue to meet on a yearly basis.
And to add to that, so Councilman Pritty is on the review committee, and some of the things that we have on the evaluation list when we select the operator is financial sustainability, you know, proven experience, and then whenever we draw up the contract, there will be certain things in there that are included in that of performance metrics.
And I do want to say thank you very much, because this is needed, and I appreciate your concern about it and how hard you've worked.
One of the things also with this program was that there has to be someone already practicing, and, you know, in the field, so with experience, don't we won't be able to get some funds, that's one of the reasons we was trying to present it to HUD, so they could see the outlet of what we're gonna do.
And that's my question, is this is, there's a limited number of those nonprofits that exist in our community.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that they are gonna be responsible for the fundraising efforts to be able to run this, okay? If we're looking out four or five years in the future, and they're having fundraising issues to maintain their current operations, who then becomes responsible for operating the shelter?
That's what I was getting at, thank you. I mean, I think that we would rebid it, but.
I was about to say, yeah.
If you can't find somebody to operate it, who becomes responsible for operating it?
The city would.
That's what I was, the operator.
They would become the owner of the building, which they already are, but I don't think that, the main thing about, if the shelter, just say God forbid it didn't work, the city would own the building, but there would be restrictions on the building, it would be for low-income, mostly homeless people, some type of program of some sort.
Right, out of that facility, out of that city-owned building?
Yes.
I would also say that a couple of the homeless agencies that I think are anticipating applying to run the shelter, they receive emergency solutions grant funding, which they receive quite a bit, and it is for operations of a shelter, they can do a budget to do operations of a shelter, so.
Okay, so there are dollars available for these.
There's roughly four million dollars annually given out for ESG funds.
Yes.
Nationally?
No, in western states.
Thank you, that's what.
They're pretty strong.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I think even if an agency that applied to run the shelter was not receiving these funds, they could apply.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I would just like to say, I think, you know, I said on the committee when we first started talking about the homeless shelter, and the big issue that we had was somebody to operate it, and we had several nonprofits that were sitting on that committee with us, and it came down to nobody really wanted to do it because of the funding, so hoping that we can find somebody real quick and later that wanna run the facility, because I think it's a great project needed in our community, or a city outside don't have one.
Yeah.
So, but I think we need to find or put that bid out.
We opened those bids July twenty-first, and again, Councilman Pritty is on that review committee, so we'll let y'all know, surely we'll have multiple, but we'll let you know.
Very quickly, who have you been talking with? I mean, this is a small community, I mean, there should two or three.
The Air Relief Ministry, Tennessee Homeless Solutions, the Dream Center, the Care Center, United Way, Vicki Lake with the foundation who does the coordinated care.
Continual care.
Yeah, there's been a wide representation.
Sure, okay, thank you.
And might I add, I think also that a lot of them were on reserve because we didn't have a building, we didn't have these extra funds where we could go out and purchase, and the question was, how much am I gonna be out of pocket for? I think that's why a lot of people are on reserve about operating, because they do have limited funds as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was, like I said, the funding was the main issue, I mean, and, you know, me personally think Air Relief Ministry would be a great person to do it, because they already have that relationship with homeless men.
Especially me.
Yeah, so I think if we can coach them along, I think they would be a great organization to do it.
One final question, will the city bid out the construction on this, or will, the city will take that on, not JHA?
Sure.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass eight-one.
All right, item three.
Thank you, guys.
Item three is a proposed budget amendment to the capital outlay fund of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to fund two moors for groundskeeping.
Yes, so this would amend the current capital budget, this would amend the budget, taking existing budgeted funds for another project, and reassign those funds for the acquisition of these two moors for the groundskeeping department. So move.
Second. A motion in second, this is an item on first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass seven-two.
All right, item four is a proposed budget amendment to solid waste fund, the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars to fund four new positions.
This proposed budget amendment, as the mayor described, would be for the solid waste fund, this would fund four new positions for the solid waste department, two of those positions would be used to man or operate a new claw truck for bulky curbside pickup services, and the other two would be used to service courtesy garbage containers here downtown and in our public parks, and this would be funded from the solid waste fund fund balance.
Any questions from counsel?
Yes, just real quick, because Mr. Buchanan and I were talking about this, and this is an issue that he sees as well in his community, on the claw truck piles, we need to make sure that we've got our claw truck operators set up, I think we've purchased two new claw trucks this year.
We will be purchasing.
We will be purchasing, we've already allocated the funding for those, so right now, she's at five claw truck drivers, is that right?
We have three.
Three now, so the gap there is.
So we have three, we have three claw trucks in the shop at this moment.
Right.
Now, we have a total of eight claw trucks.
But drivers, we're sitting at five, right?
We'll have seven.
Seven, you're hiring two, okay, so, so we're trying to push to have ten total positions or nine, ten total positions? It's incumbent upon the city to make sure that waste management is following the contract, and I said this Thursday night, but I'll say it again for those that weren't present, the hand piles, we have to make sure that waste management is picking up the hand piles. If waste management doesn't pick up the hand piles, they become her responsibility, they become the taxpayers' responsibility, so the taxpayers are getting double dipped on the hand pile issue, so we need to make sure that they're picking the hand piles up and we're holding them to account on that. I've been doing it in my district, going around, if I see a hand pile that's missed on a garbage day, I'll do it as soon as I leave here, I'll start taking pictures, and each one of those should be a hundred dollar fine. We need to make sure that that is taken care of, that these, that they're, and that also we're providing some support, and I encourage the mayor's office to look at that, providing support for the claw truck drivers, be it beanbed trucks or roll-off containers, I know they've been doing that on the short term, but looking at that on a long-term basis to make sure that we've got the help to get this up. The piles are out of control, and we've got to figure out how to get them in control. So I'm all for approving two new claw truck drivers, but it's more than just that, that will not solve the problem. I move to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second, this is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, be recognized, raising your hand. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
Item five is a proposed budget amendment to the general fund, the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars seventy-five cents to general fund insurance recovery, JPD vehicle.
Second.
First.
Move.
So move.
We have a motion?
Oh, man, they gotta be on steroids, turn home.
Johnny, did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Harvey second.
Harvey second, got it.
On every motion.
Yeah. Item on first reading, anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, be recognized, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
Item six is a consideration of an ordinance to abandon a street stub on Clay Street.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Mr. Pilot, you look real nice this morning.
This is an item on first reading, anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, be recognized, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Stan. If I get this level of performance, I'll dress up more often.
Item seven is a consideration of a solid waste ordinance amendment, title seventeen, to allow for construction dumpsters. This falls in line with our new contract that will start in August, so if you have any questions, we have Ms. Luna here, and then.
Make a motion to accept.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, this is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of.
Can we move to accept, seven through eleven, seven through ten?
We gotta get there first. We're still on first reading, I gotta open the public hearing. All right, this is an item on first reading, so I will open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, seeing none, close the public hearing, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would appreciate them being able just to speak, because I think clarification to the public, that this is a great thing that we have right here, so may we have the opportunity to hear it so the public can understand this.
Sure, so we added actual the containers, the roll-off containers, the description of what a roll-off container is that we use in the contract with the solid waste, we also have added in the definition of the temporary roll-off containers, which is what we're speaking of today, which you'll be voting, it is now an open market, these containers provide a period of six consecutive months or less, so construction, folks moving out that have an entire household instead of putting it at the curb, those kind of containers would be utilized.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
All right, thank you, no second readings, we get to new business, the election of a vice mayor for FY twenty-one, twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Buchanan?
Nominate Councilman Paul Taylor to serve as vice mayor.
All right, have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion?
I can't make a joke.
Any further discussion, Councilman Wallace?
I was gonna say, I can't make a joke, so I'll just go on.
Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
All right.
Happily, thank you.
Counsel, please vote.
If I could just say, after we vote.
Yeah, I was gonna open it up, we better let you.
Okay.
You should've said it before.
You lost your opportunity.
I'm gone.
You'll make some grand statements after we vote, it's been thus.
Is this when we pay our money to you?
Yeah, so, we're gonna vote now on the, well, I think they popped it back too quickly.
They voted.
No, they come back, she didn't get it down.
It came too, thank you.
Too quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Gary.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, vote now.
I was gonna say, yeah, it's time to vote.
I told you.
Okay, so, okay, pass eight-one.
All right, I'll recognize Councilman Dodd.
All I'm just gonna say is thank you, it's been a great, it's just been a great opportunity to serve that city, you know, I want to continue supporting Paul, supporting you as our mayor, I think we got a great council, we just have to continue working together and make sure our people are getting information that they need, but just an opportunity to serve him as vice mayor's been great, thank you.
Thank you, sure, it's council.
Appreciate you, Johnny.
Item two is consideration of a contract with A1 Chemical Products for Janitorial Products.
Good morning, and I'd like you for meeting.
Have a motion, Councilman Dodd, second by Councilman Brooks. Any questions, further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
Item three is consideration of a contract with Mid Solutions for police uniform shirts, trousers, jackets, outer vest carriers, and patches.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
Item four, consideration of a proposal from Triad Environmental Consultants for groundwater reporting services for the old Madison County landfill.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
Do we get a clear idea on the timeline of this, Mr. Wolf? I know there were some questions around that on our meeting on Thursday, just on how long we need to continue this moving forward?
My understanding is thirty years, but if there is, as we move forward and their inspection is done, if there's anything found, then it gets extended.
Okay.
And this contract, or this ten thousand dollars is to complete the report for last October, which is past due, as well as the early spring report, and I believe they've already done the chemical, they pulled samples, and I believe they're doing the lab work now for the fall report, so I'll have to come back to you again for a proposal, with a proposal, for them to continue to do the reports.
Okay.
But I figured it'd be easier to do, I don't know if there'll be an increase/decrease in the proposal, so this will be good for one year, and if we need a second one, then we'll move forward with that.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
All right, item five is consideration of a request for supplement design services for the US forty-five bypass southern extension project.
This was within previously budgeted funds, is that right?
My understanding is that there was a three hundred thousand dollar contingency put into the contract, and that was approved by council, this is for two hundred and six thousand dollars and change, so they are within their contract amount, yes.
So move them.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
Item six is a resolution to approve substantial amendment to Community Development's Annual Action Plan.
Be twenty?
It'd be twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
I was trying to get the years in my head.
I know, I'm there with you.
It'll be twenty-nineteen.
It is twenty, okay.
Yeah, HUD advised us to amend the same plan that we amended for the previous CARES Act fund.
So move. And this is just dealing with the, the only amendment to your plan is the homeless shelter that we discussed earlier?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
A motion in second.
And third.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass nine-zero.
All right. I have a request to take item seven through ten together, there be no objections, we'll do a consideration of street acceptance requests for Shepherd's Field, section eight B, eight C, eleven A, eleven B.
So move.
Have a motion, there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Can we come up with an inspection process to make sure that we're inspecting and have a qualified engineer look at these prior to acceptance moving forward?
We have an inspection process now, it's just, I second Tom in saying that it would be better if you had a construction person out there inspecting during the construction process, because the way it works now is, there's an inspection done once the base is down, before they put the final surfaces on, then there's another inspection when they go from the performance period to the maintenance period, right now, what you have, the streets have been through the performance period, they are inspected before they're brought to you to make sure that they performed what they're supposed to, then you accept them, then they have a year to carry them, so there's a year warranty that you've accepted them, but they're still carried by the developer. When it reaches toward the end of that period, then the inspection, another inspection occurs to make sure that the road is still in good shape, if it's not, they have to fix whatever's wrong before we release their maintenance bond, so that's the way the inspection process does now, the issue is, we don't have inspectors that are out there on a regular basis during the construction period, and that's where they need to be there more often, now, I'm not talking about every day, but they need to be there at some places where there's key things being put in, like you said, stormwater and some other things, curb and gutter that go into the stability and the quality of that street, and since these are streets that you're accepting, and they're gonna be streets going forward, you might as well make sure that what you're getting is a quality product, so I think there's some improvements that can be done, there are inspections going on now, so there's not, there's not streets that you're getting that we don't know anything about, we are knowing things about them, we just need to probably know more about them so that we're comfortable in getting a quality product.
So we just need to maybe tweak the inspection process a little bit?
There needs to be some more regular inspections going on during the construction part of the road, now, there's certain inspections being done at Bent.
So we just need to maybe tweak the inspection process a little bit?
There needs to be some more regular inspections going on during the construction part of the road. Now, there's certain inspections being done at benchmarks where they're having to move from one performance to maintenance and things like that, but there would be more value added, I think, if there were inspections going on when, before the base is done, when stormwater's being put in, the pipes are being put in, you know, when the curb and gutters being put in, some other things that go into the quality of that road. Now, again, there's no reason to have somebody sitting out there on a daily basis, but there's a need to have some other regular inspections occur.
Mr. Pilot, how do we go about doing that?
It's just a matter of, is engineering, getting these people up to speed that they've got, and also looking at whether there are other resources that are needed, but that's, you know, we lean heavily on them for that. We do the actual planning of the network, but they actually oversee the construction, so it's important that they have the right resources and capabilities to do that. And so I would say just making sure that Tom has what he needs to get that done.